Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Board of Education meeting tonight. Can all stand for the pleasurable agents? Pleasurable agents.
The United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation and our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the published agenda, motion?
No motion.
Thank you, Mr. Grass. Second, Mr. Meyer. All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, at this time we'll have a presentation of the external auditor report, Dr. Sanders, from Cullen and Nitske.
Good evening to the Board of Education and the community. I'm here to present the financial statement audit results for the year ending June 30th, 2015. We've completed our process a number of months ago, and we did meet with the audit committee while the reports are in draft. I appreciate the input of the audit committee while we went through the process of reviewing the results. The results that I'm presenting this evening are positive. Positive with respect to the internal control structure and positive with respect to the financial results of the school district. So our process starts with a risk assessment. We evaluate the internal control structure. Are there checks and balances that would lead us to believe that the financial statements fail to present the condition of the school district, not only on June 30th, but also throughout the year? And there is a very good internal control structure in place. So those are checks and balances to make sure that you minimize the risk of further defalcation. As a result of our audit, we present five documents to the Board of Education. The first one is the general purpose financial statement. We've rendered what's known as an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that the Board of Education gets that the financial statements fail to present. The next document that we present is a federal single audit. The district is very aggressive in trying to get whatever federal funding they can. It's about three and a half million dollars' worth of federal funding, both from programs, educational programs, and in the food service area. We had no findings in this particular area. We audit based upon a risk assessment, and those programs are major. The district is a low-risk audit team, which means there haven't been any previous audit findings, so that's a positive thing, because these are federally funded programs, and the federal government from time to time will visit school districts and perform a desk review or actual physical audit. We've also rendered a report on the extra classroom activity funds, as the Board of Education is aware. The Business Office does not control these funds. These are the various clubs and activities approved by the Board of Education, but the State Education Department requires us to look at the controls over these, and these are very good controls over the many clubs, with respect to the spending and the cash receipts, to make certain that the children's money is protected. We've rendered what's known as a management letter, and just as a reminder to the Board of Education and the community, that within the structure of the internal control assessment that we do with respect to the financial statement audit, there are three categories of findings that we might have. Those findings that are egregious are under the categories of material misstatement, material weakness, or significant deficiency. The school district has no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We commented on the prior year procedurally in two areas, and it's in the form of the management letter, and I was very pleased to see as we evaluated the internal control structure and the corrective action plan that was put in place by the school district, that the two items that we brought to the Board of Education's attention last year were remediated during this current year. We have no current new management letter findings. We also had a communication to the Board of Education in accordance with AUC 260, so under those standards, I'm required to communicate to the Board of Education if there was any documentation that was not provided to us in the conduct of our audit, if the financial statements were not in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and if we had any issues with respect to any adjustments that we might have proposed during the audit process with respect to the district not wanting to record those, or no such items communicated to the Board of Education. So I think the important thing is, is when you look at the financial statement, especially with the tax cap in place, how fiscally stable are you? And so I compliment you on maintaining your fiscal stability. You spent about four, you spent all but 4% of your budget, and for those of us that have a commercial, you know, that have commercial experience, if we were looking at having contingency money available, which the state does not allow you to do that, we would be looking at obviously not spending every dollar of our budget. We'd be looking at setting aside, through the unassigned fund balance, the most that you can, which is 4%. Why do you want to do that? Because obviously if the tax cap is going to be 1% or less, it's going to impact unless you have unassigned fund balance to support your programs, those problems, those programs that you'll be able to prospectively deliver for the education of students. So to the extent that you're able to maintain your 4% unassigned fund balance, that's a good thing, and basically that's done as a result of not spending all your budget. A proposition was approved by the community in the form of a capital reserve, and so you were able to fund added issue savings, money towards that capital reserve. You also were able to, you had a referendum for transportation, some regular buses and some many buses, and you were able to, because of your favorable financial condition, to go ahead and secure short-term financing, and that short-term financing was at a very inexpensive amount of money to the district. It's less than a half a percent. If you didn't have such a good financial condition, you would not be able to do that in the form of farm. So I mean, I think those are all the positive things that created your financial condition as of June 30th, 2015. I don't know if the Board of Education have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Grass.
I'll use my teacher voice. Usually you look at things that you want to concentrate on for the next year. Can you share that with us?
Sure. So as part of the risk assessment that we perform for the financial statement audit, the key areas that we looked at during the past year were purchasing and payroll. Payroll, because payroll and benefits are obviously the largest part of the school district's budget, and purchasing, because we want to make sure that there's controls over the cash dispersments. Does it look like this competitive bidding, if competitive bidding is required? Does it look like this solicitation of quotations in accordance or requests for proposals in accordance with the Board of Education's policy? Okay? Is that in compliance with generally municipal law? Are the items received by the district, do they make sense as far as where they're charged against the budgetary appropriation? And so we do this on a sample basis, based on the population of all the transactions, to get comfortable as to whether or not we feel items were properly recorded, and that there's the existence of those items or services which the district expended funds.
One other question. I read this today at home, and I found all of your documentation. I can't locate it now, but, so forgive me if I got this wrong, but you mentioned the student accounts. I know several years ago, we spent time on trying to revise that so that it became more accountable. You said something in your report that the documentation was not there so that you could follow the regular accounting practices, but then you said, just denied, that you feel that everything is above board. Okay, is that correct?
That's a very good question. Okay, so we've rendered what's known as a qualified opinion on the extra classroom activity funds, and why would that be? If you think about what we're auditing, we're auditing the records from the central treasurer, so we're not necessarily auditing the records that are maintained by the faculty advisors on behalf of the students who are involved in the clubs or activities. Since I can't audit that source documentation, because it's not part of the central treasurer's records, I have to qualify my opinion for the transaction based upon the source versus what the central treasurer's information might yield. Irrespective of that, though, the central treasurer maintains a good set of books and records which tell us by club and activity, money that's collected, what is it for? Money that's dispersed, what is it for? Is there a faculty student advisor, is there faculty advisor signature on dispersments? Is there student involvement in the dispersment? Does it make sense as to what the dispersment is for? And so when I talked about the internal controls over the transactions, I'm talking about with respect to auditing the accounting records and auditing the substance of the transactions. I can't audit the cash receipts collected at the student or teacher level. That's why there's the qualification.
So you are saying that the system that we put into place is working?
Yes, it is. And the, just so that everyone understands in the room, the qualification that we have on our report is the qualification we have on every school district's extra classroom activity funds that we audit. And as external auditors, we have about 60 school districts that we perform that process for, so it's not, you know, it's not special to Riverhead School District. It's just inherent in the audit process that we can't audit the collection of cash from the inception. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much to the audit committee for all their involvement in the process, both in the planning and in the review of the documents while they were in draft, and also to Mr. Schneider and his office for the job that they did.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, opportunity for members of the community to address the Board of Education or the general topics only. Yes?
Ms. Master Polo Calend. Item D, approval of memorandum of agreement. Can you net out the agreement? What did we basically give them as far as the use of their accumulated sick time?
Yes, we have two teachers in the district who have very sick children, who are undergoing serious medical procedures, and this agreement is to allow them to use their own sick time to have time off to be with their children during these procedures.
Thank you. Item E. If we submit Affordable Care Act documentation every year, and I'm sure we've done it for the last five years, why do we pay $33,000 to HB Solutions when the district has to prepare the information to give it to them? All they really do is fill out the forms and submit it. I mean, it's like me doing my income tax every year. I take last year's income tax, I take next year's forms, I gather all my data, and I fill out the form. Okay. I mean, why can't our superintendent or the people that work for him fill out the paperwork? I mean, we're going to be paying $33,000 every year for somebody to fill out forms when we gather all the information?
Mr. Master Polo, if I may, I had all of the exact same questions that you have.
Good, I'm glad.
Yes, I did, and actually, at my cluster meeting for a local superintendent, we all had these discussions, and every one of the local districts uses an outside person, but I asked, I had the same concern, and I asked, I would ask Mr. Schneider, who responded to me, to respond to you, because his expertise in the area will be better to answer your question. Thank you.
Okay, first, this is the first year, 2015 year, that we have to fill out these forms specifically, a 1094C and 1095C with the IRS. The Affordable Care Act, while it's older, does not have this reporting requirement. If only it were just as easy as filling out a tax return, that would certainly be something we could do, but for each employee, you're talking about dozens and dozens of data points that need to be filled in, and part of what HB Solutions is doing is helping us gather the information from various sources, including the employee files, Empire Nish, which is the insurer, and putting it all together to make it come out on these forms. The penalty for errors that the IRS imposes on employers is quite steep, and I would like to suggest that you think of this as an insurance policy, that it's going to be done correctly, because we're talking about dozens of data points for each of the approximately 800 people who are insured through us, either as employees or retirees. It is a ton of data, and it's taking both HB Solutions and the people who work in my office, great investments of time. I recognize it's not an investment that I would like to see, I think it's, you know, unfortunate byproduct of the Affordable Care Act, but I think that this is money well-spent, because the risk the district will take by making mistakes in these forms, and again, it's the first time it's ever, we're doing it, anybody's doing it, it is really quite expensive.
Thank you. I have one more question relative to this. Are we doing anything from a systems point of view to make it easier to capture the data, so that in future years, we have the data more readily available to us, and maybe we don't need to go outside to gather the data?
Absolutely, Mr. Master Polo. We were trying as a district to do this in-house ourselves, by doing exactly what you're saying. We're working with WinCap, which is our management system, and making, you know, and seeing how we could have all of our data be properly inputted and all of the different pieces communicate with each other. We're not quite there yet, but it is something that we're working towards, absolutely, and that's a very good question.
Okay, thank you.
Lori Downs. I wanted to ask, last week we put a part-time gym teacher on at the table. I see here that you have him back up as a part-time teacher. When I went home that last meeting, I went home and I checked his certification. Is he actually certified to be a teacher or a coach?
This person, and as we were, as I've been working with Mr. Wicks on all of the new certification issues by the State Education Department, there's all new tests that occur now for teachers that become certified. This person has completed and graduated with a bachelor's degree in physical education, and he is currently working towards taking his last test that he needs to take, and we are permitted to hire that person as long as they are enrolled in, you know, the program to be sure that they're taking the test. We've had to do that with some of our English new ESL, ENL teachers, as well as bilingual teachers and some special education teachers that now have new requirements in order to become certified. So there are new requirements.
Did we change that? Because it used to be that we would not hire unless they were certified, and that was decades back.
Yes, I said, this is, you know, and we are absolutely dedicated to being sure that we have qualified people.
And what happens if they don't pass the test?
If they don't pass the test, then we will go out and repost for the position.
Hold you to that, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. Rick Fisher from Kellerton. Mrs. Sanders just confirmed with me that she didn't audit anything in the purchasing process that was teaching. We still have an open issue with, or at least the line items I've provided the FOILs for that the vast majority of those invoices submitted under those line items don't contain any certified payroll, as well as apparently there are purchases under color opposing contract, and that's, so garbage in, garbage out. If the detail is, if those invoices never should have been accepted because they lack certified payroll, certainly the rest of the financials failed. So I would request that you, that the Board look into that, and I would request that they consult with the auditors who did handle that detail, who did stand for as qualified to pay those invoices that were missing material documents, those invoices that should not have been accepted. I would request that the Board ask those auditors why they allowed those invoices to proceed through the accounting system that should have been stopped at the door. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Approval of consent agenda, motion? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Ms. Dor. All in favor? Yes.
Turn this thing off.
On item E, just wondering if you could separate out item number one. Motion to approve consent agenda with removal of item E, number one. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second. Thank you, Mr. Grass. All in favor? Everyone in? Everyone in favor? Yes. Motion carried. Okay. Motion for item E of the consent agenda, item one.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Thank you, Mr. Dor. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed, this House. All right. Approval of external audit report and corrective action plan, which we just heard today. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Second, Ms. Lance. Any discussion?
I'd just like to echo Ms. Sanders' remarks in thanking the rest of the board of committee members of the board of our work, and also Mr. Schneider.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion carried. Approval of call for special meeting? Sure.
I'm sorry, did we approve the consent agenda? I thought we just approved the one item that was removed. Did we then go back and approve the rest under?
Yes.
Item D.
First, and then we approved that one item.
So you, okay, so then you approved it without that one item first?
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure we had the record correct.
Okay, approval for a call, special meeting. Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Ms. Legan. And anyone who wants to fill in the time here. It's Wednesday, December 16th, at 10:00 a.m. Okay. All in favor? Motion carried. Approval of local assistance plan? Motion? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any discussion? Yes.
Nancy, could you just explain how, I'm looking at the actual statement of practice, I guess it's called. How was that developed in order to come up with a plan on addressing the ELA specific to that subgroup?
Can you repeat the question?
I'm just wondering how the lab is developed. Is it through, you know, reviewing the test results and meeting with the principal? I mean, I just wanted to understand.
The lab is developed, yes, through looking at the results of the different students who did not meet certain, you know, and as you're aware with our state assessments, it's based on a one, two, three, four system, and depending on where students perform, if certain groups of students don't perform at a certain level, you develop a local assistance plan, and that is developed through a team of people at each school, looking at the data, and looking at areas that you can target based on student performance, and that's how a plan is created. And I do ask people to remember that this is one assessment for that students take, and it doesn't necessarily measure all the growth that has occurred with students. So this is a process, though, that it can be very beneficial, as we're constantly looking to be sure that our students are meeting the standards that are set before them.
So when you're looking at the actual document, how is it that, or why is it that all of the grades, for lack of a rating, the way they describe it, is rated effective? Like, is that just a review internally, and then we're rating effective, or is that coming from another source?
No, as you're aware, the ratings with the APPR are based on a percentage of your state assessment and then a percentage of the observation process. So through the observation process, which includes student performance with local measures and local testing and local assessments, teachers can be rated at a level that is, in the old system, it could be 60%. It's based on that level, where the 40% was based 20% on state assessment, 20% on local assessments, and the other 60% on the observation rubric that was approved by the State Education Department. So if a teacher was rated effective in all the other areas, they could be rated effective, while still students didn't necessarily get a three or a four, but remember, not as the Riverhead News Review reported, a school is not considered failing if it is a lap school. And that is just an indication that there are certain students who are not specifically at the level that is targeted for them. It doesn't mean that growth has not occurred and that teachers have not been effective in the instruction that is occurring in the classroom, which is really evident through multiple measures of assessment, particularly student work.
But this actual, I'm just looking at the lab that we're approving tonight. This actually looks like it's rating the entire school, it's not rating a particular teacher, right?
It, each school gets a rating based on all of the teachers. Every school gets a rating, and a principal gets a rating based on the composite scores of all of the teachers in the district. So based on all of the scores that teachers received on those measures that I just mentioned, a school and building principal will get a rating. And a school can be rated effective based on the other measures, even if that one state assessment had certain components of it that were not effective.
So essentially, we're, so our schools are rated effective on, from what I'm seeing on every level?
The schools, yeah. Mr. Wicks is going to elaborate further.
So as far as the document is concerned, what it asks the principal to do is, it's a self-review document, so they're responsible for rating themselves in the different areas you see there. So that's, and that's what the document asks them to do. So what you're approving tonight is this plan that, in this case, Ms. Rogers and her team put together and ran rate it themselves as a building. So it is the building level, it's a self-review document.
Anyone else? All in favor? Motion carried. Item D, approval of, sorry, memorandum of agreement. Thank you, Mrs. Hals. Thank you, Mr. Grass. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Approval of contract?
No motion.
Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Approval of the 2015-16 revised salary schedule? Motion? Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second. Thank you, Mr. Dor. Any discussion?
When is that revised? Did we, when did we last approve this?
When did we last approve?
I believe in July. Yes, in July.
Do you guys revise this?
Yes.
Anyone else? All in favor? Motion carried. Motion carried. Approval of disposal surplus. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Anybody wants a copy?
Yeah. Sure, I see you're sitting around a van.
All in favor? Motion carried. Approval acceptance of donation. And this is going from Riverhead Building Supply, the class of 2018, for $57.51. Thank you, Mr. Grass. Thank you, Mr. Myers. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Riverhead Building Supply.
Yes. Ms. Curry, District News.
Thank you. Just want to mention that at our last meeting, I did mention how our students at Pulaski Street School donated their extra Halloween candy to troops stationed overseas. And today Cindy Haverty, who is a sixth grade teacher at Pulaski Street School, received a phone call from Command Sergeant Major Jeffrey Dunkelberger, who's currently stationed in Saudi Arabia. And he called to thank our students for all the candy and sweets that they sent to the servicemen and women. And he was much appreciative and obviously that phone call meant a lot to the teacher and to the students at Pulaski Street. We appreciate the effort. And I just want to congratulate our students at Pulaski and also at Riley Avenue, who really took effort into thinking about our troops overseas during this time of year. And we thank Major Dunkelberger for their courage and for being soldiers and protecting our nation. So we thank them. Also want to mention that our college application season is really in full swing, even though it's only fall. And our high school guidance department has once again hosted a program entitled Campus Connection. Our Riverhead High School alumni, who are presently college freshmen, they come back to our high school during their Thanksgiving break and they speak to our high school seniors about the process of applying to and getting ready for college. This has been a very successful program because many kids don't realize what they're getting into when they first go away to college. And these kids really give a firsthand account for our students to help them prepare and knowing that it's a whole different world when you get to college. And it's a really wonderful time for kids to ask questions and then for our freshman students and alumni to give answers. And we truly appreciate them coming back and giving up their vacation time for their fellow students. And then in other college news, there's going to be an onsite college admission program at the high school gym on December 10th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also, we'd like to congratulate 66 students who are inducted into the National Honor Society on Wednesday, November 18th. As Principal Charles Regan noted, the National Honor Society is more than just an honor roll and using our national guidelines, the local chapter establishes rules for membership that are based upon a student's outstanding performance in the area of scholarship, service, leadership, and character. And it was really a beautiful ceremony and a wonderful group of students that were inducted. We congratulate them all. Also want to say congratulations to our Riverhead High School NJROTC drill team. They took over 50 cadets to the first regional drill meet of the year at Ethel, Connecticut. 19 schools and over 800 cadets competed, the largest regional drill meet in recent memory. The first cadets won first place in both the NS1 platoon led by Nicholas Waldron competition and the NS1 academic team led by Jacob Gilmarten competition. And the armed platoon led by Nicholas Waldron won second place. And the unarmed platoon led by Dakota Ventresco won third place. The annual drill meet and Hassan Unarmed Platoon won third place, as I said. And the Befour NJROTC unit will be held in the high school gym on December 10th at 9:00 a.m. We congratulate our Riverhead High School NJROTC drill team for continuous and ongoing success in all the meets that they do participate in. They really do bring a lot of pride to our school. And just want to mention and give some accolades to some middle school students. After a series, as everyone is aware, of the terrorist attacks that struck Paris, France, on November 13th, our middle school and high school French students really wanted to reach out to French teenagers with a message of solidarity. And like many of the messages that have gone viral over the internet, the messages our students sent included very beautiful graphic designs and artistic work, as well as brief messages of support to the students over there. And Carrie Westphal's French class made a bulletin board message that's out in the lobby of the school. And Betsy Ruttall's class wrote notes to a French high school in Saint Pierre-Lézanne-Albe. And we just want to say to all of these students, their efforts, their concern for people around the world are noted and they are really appreciated. And it was just a wonderful effort of kids reaching out to other kids. And then just want to end with noting that tomorrow morning, the Phillips Avenue Elementary School will be hosting its sixth annual community cafe. And this is an annual pancake breakfast for the families of Phillips Avenue. And it's hosted by administrators, teachers, staff, and other volunteers at the Phillips Avenue Elementary School. It's being held from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. in the cafeteria. Last year, we had more than 500 people stop by. And it's really just a wonderful community event. We commend all of the staff that volunteers their time to make this happen. If anyone would like to come volunteer their time, you're welcome to stop by, to serve, to clean, to just enjoy time spent together with the community. And also just want to thank the RCFA. They hosted their third consecutive Harlem Wizards game. And this event is a fundraiser for our Riverhead Central Faculty Association Senior Scholarship Fund. We had 1,100 tickets sold and $15,000 raised. Prior to the game, we had about 67 children who had the opportunity to interact with the Wizards. They visited all of our schools with an anti-bullying message. We appreciate them coming back to the schools. We appreciate the RCFA for putting this event together. And then just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone and hope you enjoy time with your family over the next few days.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Opportunity for more members. Mr. Doran.
I'd just like to put it out there to have the students made aware that St. Francis Hospital is doing a cardiac screening for student athletes free of charge. It's done monthly. It's very, I think, worthwhile to have everybody checked out so we don't have any incidences that can be taken care of or prevented.
Thank you. Anyone?
I see one of the contracts that were under the superintendent's execution, superintendent of 10,000, was for the land surveyor. So I'm assuming that means we're moving forward with the bus garage in Calverton. Can we just get a quick update on that, please?
Yes, I think I put in the last update, the four phases going forward. That land surveyor is actually for the Buildings and Grounds building, which is going to be backed by the high school track. Excuse me, the high school track. So that land surveyor is doing the survey for that property as we're getting ready to submit it to the State Education Department.
Anyone else?
The plans, we actually, at our last vote meeting, we looked over all the plans. We're making revisions and plans for both that building and for the Buildings and Grounds building are being sent up to the State Education Department within the next month or so. And the turf field plants have already been sent to SED. We're expecting to get that going this spring. So it should be ready for the fall of next season as we go forward.
The reason why I thought it was in Calverton is because the actual contract reads, proposed bus garage development at 337 Edwards Avenue, Calverton. So that's why I was assuming that that survey that is entitled that for the 5950 pertained to that.
It's a good point and it's part of the whole package with the survey. It's this particular, right at this time, they're doing the surveying of the property for the Buildings and Grounds building.
Anyone else? Opportunity for RCFA.
Good evening and happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, I'm just here to talk about the events we had with the Harlem Wizards, which is really just involved and to be a wonderful community event. We've expanded our sponsorships. I believe we had 16 corporate sponsors for almost a total of $5,000 in sponsorships. And it's really enabled us to grow our scholarship program. Typically, since the Harlem Wizards started, we've given away $10,000 a year. At this point, we're now looking to, since our student population is more than just graduating seniors, we are going to look to have a scholarship program to send elementary students to East End Arts Council or some type of summer camp. And as we wrestle with all these new state mandates and all these new state evaluations, which I believe gives us a myopic view of what's actually happening in our schools and our classrooms. When we have events like the Pancake Breakfast tomorrow at Phillips or the Harlem Wizards, where the entire community along the teachers and administrators and board of members can get together, I think it's a much better reflection of what our community is and what our schools are, rather than solely basing our view of our schools over a test score. So I think events like these that bring us together are a great reflection on what's going on in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community.
Lori Downs, Riverhead. I have something that I've been wanting to say for a long time, or actually suggest. And it's really something that I think is important. I would hope that in the light of all these problems that we're seeing in other schools as far as employees and stuff, we see a congressman getting in trouble with addiction and the problem that we're having with addiction, that hopefully that we could amend our contracts, that all employees can be coordinated at any time for a drug or alcohol testing. As we know, addiction does not strike one particular type of person. It hits all walks of life. It doesn't matter how many degrees you have or how many degrees you don't. It doesn't matter if you're flipping burgers in McDonald's or you're a CEO of a major company. I don't mean this to insult any of our employees. I feel it's for the health of our employees and for the health and the safety of our children. And I believe that regardless, if you could work in Old Davie and be pulled in at any time to have a drug test, and I can't see why it can't happen here. Somebody had said that other schools don't do it. I don't care about other schools. This is my district. These are the children that I'm here for and that I've been advocating for all these years. And these are the teachers and the employees that I've gotten to know over the years. And I would hope that our board would think about it and actually do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Myers, second. Thank you, Ms. Lantz. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Have a good night and happy Thanksgiving.